It's eight thirty. Your stand says pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning there, buddy. Mr. County Board Supervisors meeting. There is the Osage Courthouse in Osage. Meeting is available by vote to meeting also. There is an agenda in front of us. Any corrections needed to the agenda? I would accept the motion for it.
I need to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Brian has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Hendrickson, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing no, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Approve minutes of the October tenth meeting. Any corrections needed? Or is it going to prove it?
Make motion to approve the agenda.
Parkville makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mayor, seconds. Any further discussion? There you go.
We'll call Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye. Motion carries. County Attorney General discussion.
So on Friday, you know, we had that case on the Kephart for the littering matter. We don't have any decision yet. Went on for, I don't know, three, four hours, way longer than it should have. But his attorney predictably, shouldn't say bad, but his attorney wanted time to brief some points of law that frankly, I think are fairly clear and nobody needs time to brief them, but he asked for it, so he'll get that time and then I'll probably file something afterwards just, I know, I mean, I know what his arguments are and I think they don't hold much merit, but you know, what do I know? But anyway, so it might be, you know, it could be a couple of weeks or so, you know, before we hear anything about that. But we've had our evidence and everything, so, I mean, that's done. Sheriff can talk about more of this. We had our sentencing yesterday on the Mr. Gilmore, you know, murder charge, so he'll be out of our hair, or hasn't been in my hair, he's been in their hair, but that's done. The only other thing I have to mention right now is I think Becky will be over here probably toward the end of the meeting. I have like two or three different things that the chairperson of the Board of Supervisors needs to sign, as well as Rachel's acceptance of service of notice regarding certain property we've been discussing here. And so you see her scurrying here toward the end, she'll probably just wait till the end and maybe get Rachel to sign something, Jim to sign something, and probably Shannon upstairs to sign something. So I guess that, that's pretty much what I have this morning.
That'll be after your turn, correct?
Yeah, because she might slide in here a little bit ahead of time and sit down.
Okay.
Yeah, try to make sure she doesn't interrupt the meeting and start blocking her.
Very good. Any questions for the attorney? You're good to go.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Sheriff update.
Good morning, everyone. Just two items. Had an IT problem on Sunday afternoon. We had to scramble to try and find somebody to fix that for us. Joel Roney, person for us, picked up the phone and he was able to solve that problem. The state computers would not connect to our servers and we didn't have passwords to make that repair ourselves, I guess. One of the things we shouldn't be doing, right, by the report, is our own IT work, but we have to. Joel was able to fix that and we got, what that does when those issues happen is we can't receive information from other agencies and we can't send out information and/or run our DL checks, our registration checks, our warrant checks on folks that we have contact with. So everything that we need information based, we don't have. And so it's important that that stays running. So, and it has since Sunday. I know IT is on the agenda, a few items down, so I just encourage you to keep plowing forward with that and try and get somebody on board as quickly as possible. And then secondly, I think Monday is the next HVAC meeting.
Parkville's meeting.
Yeah, and so I plan on attending that with data, there's some issues that cover roads. So we'll talk about it on Monday and I think there's solutions to it. We just need folks to be involved with that, so. Other than that, I don't have anything. If you have questions for me or anybody here does, I'll be happy to answer.
This was good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Department head discussion. Who are the department heads?
Conservation update, Department of Agriculture meeting. Conservation Board had their October meeting last week. We had to, we invited the Iowa DNR local fisheries to come and give an update on the Cedar River and stocking that they do trout, so we invited them, they gave an update on that aspect of it. A couple of weeks ago, you guys had it on the agenda here, held on the Conservation Board with the Summit Pipeline. We kind of reached out and spoke with Summit after your guys' board meeting. They asked not to be on our agenda at this time, they said they'd get back to us at a future date, so that kind of basically came to a standstill because of that. The Mitchell Mill Dam project is still moving forward. We'll have progress for all the entities that we needed to submit all the paperwork to has been submitted. Now we're just basically waiting for the final variance in our temporary licensing to be approved by FERC, and then once that gets gone, we'll have the project start this fall. So sometime here in the next two weeks, we're hoping to hear back from them and then the project should be able to start towards the end of October of that, which will be lowering of the water to fix the upstream side of the powerhouse. Bennett's Access, we had on the agenda as well. There was no discussion on it as we've, we had a closed session meeting the time before. We've been in conversations with the entity that owns Bennett Access for Conservation Board to purchase it, but there was no updated status on that, so we didn't discuss on that. We did get the retaining wall fixed on the Welcome Center in Riceville, so that project wrapped up. And then we're just kind of moving into fall, closing down the campgrounds, so getting stuff closed up, ready for winter, and then getting our winter programs and stuff. And then also this Sunday, we have a youth pheasants hunt. We're partnering with the local Pheasant Forever Chapter to do a youth pheasant hunt. So anybody that's interested in doing a pheasant hunt, they can sign up on our Facebook page and we'll hunt this weekend, so. Any questions?
I have one. I had an individual contact me the other day. He's upstream from the dam and meeting quite a while ago, did you mention that people will be contacted when this will start?
We said we would post it on our Facebook page, but we can't go out and contact every single individual landowner upstream, but when we had the meeting, we told them all that it would be on our Facebook page when we start the project.
Okay. And then are you still thinking a couple of weeks this would take?
It's two to six weeks to do the repairs, but to drop the water is going to take up to two weeks anyways, because we can only lower the water levels one foot per day. So the water above the dam, we can only lower one foot per day. So it'll take, it'll take a couple of weeks, probably about 10 days to get the water down to where we can actually begin work, but most people that are upstream will be able to start work sooner than that because we have to wait for the water to be down quite a bit, where most people only have to wait two to three feet and then they'll be able to do their projects on their shorelines.
Okay. I'll just tell them, keep an eye on you.
Yeah, watch our Facebook page, that's what we put on there, yep. So, and this is the timeframe, we told them at that meeting that it would be towards the end of October, first of November before it all started, so. We're still on one? Any other questions?
No.
I got one, I had a call, actually two people called, but wondered why county doesn't go by the rules that they set. And it's a lot, a little more information than that. They said, well, apparently the secondary roads put in a septic system and didn't get a permit or talked to Amanda and Conservation put in a septic system and didn't get a permit or contact Amanda before they started.
We had conversations with the person who was there and then we sent an email, which I thought had arrived to Amanda, but it never got to Amanda apparently. And so then when we called and were ready to do the septic, she wasn't aware of it. We had sent an email with the date, information, and then asked for an invoice, but then we lined up, got Amanda lined up, went through the whole process and got it taken care of.
But she didn't get a permit before you started? Neither one got a permit before they started?
We only did one project, so there wasn't two projects, it was just one. But we thought we had submitted everything, but for whatever reason, the email never went through with whoever her temporary was. So we were under the impression that everything was submitted. We submitted it beforehand before we started, we just, there was something happening, the whole IT interview and email type thing. So it wasn't something we were intentionally trying to hide, Mark, it was just a mix-up. We thought we submitted all the paperwork, we reached out to Amanda that we were starting the project, and away it went. Then we were, then she informed us that she had never received anything. So we had thought we had filed everything and was good on that.
And the secondary roads?
Yeah, I don't know what happened there. I thought the guys had been talking to Amanda. I, we just had to update our outlet lines. We had tile, I think, and they were all getting blown, so we just put the chamber system in, so.
It's kind of hard for us to have a public follow the rules when we don't do them ourselves.
We thought we did. We thought we submitted everything, so. I can speak for this Conservation that we had filled out the document, thought it was sent off and was in Amanda's temporary person, not Amanda's hand, because she was out on leave at the time we had submitted it, so we thought it was already submitted and in place, so.
Another thing, I had healthy harvests. I don't have to do it with you guys, but they're giving fruits and vegetables to the Osage School District, but not St. Hansker, not longer. Person's wanting why St. Hansker's not getting, they're going to donate a healthy harvest to that something.
And it was brought up, well, I brought it up, that why St. Hansker wasn't getting that. They were going to look into it or take care of it, but apparently called, apparently the schools asked.
I remember you.
Yeah, I remember.
And then you agreed to do it because they said they would.
Yeah, they said they would, but it didn't.
Healthy harvest, lady, then. That's all I have.
I got another, Department head discussion. I don't know. Jen, have you been in contact with the State School daycare lately?
Yes, I did call there yesterday and saw, you guys have probably heard that they are closing November third.
Well, not, not for sure.
Not as, I mean, unless they find a new director and a new board.
Right.
And so.
It sounds like there's some volunteers, but the reason they are, they don't have any kids. They got workers, they don't have kids.
Well, I think they lost, they have some enrollment issues because I think there was, it just got out that they could be closing, so I think the parents found other childcare facilities for their children to go to, so now they also have some enrollment issues.
Well, they have that before. They've been losing $4,000 a month because they don't have the kids. Well, I know there's a shortage in Mitchell County, so I hope somebody can hear this, that they have openings there. They say there's a childcare shortages, and they ain't down the north end of the county. Because they got the workers, because they raised the wages and started giving them PTO, so they've been having workers for the last year, but they've been losing money every month. Because they're all the, especially after school started, then some money up went. And then when does, you know, that $200,000 and the $200,000 match, when does that expect to be available or done?
I think we're planning to have it available by January first.
January first, though, this next year? Okay, that was a question I, I'd find out. Okay, so yeah, they're having another meeting. Monday at 5:30 and they're, and I understand there's some people willing to step up and be the board.
Okay, and a new director too?
Well, I don't know about director. And I don't know if they can run without a director.
No. I think they need some strong leadership, I mean, if they're going to be successful.
But some of the people that are going, ah, the board are pretty good, I feel. So, and I mean, they still have money too, they have money, they're.
Sure.
They're a nonprofit, so if they do close, what are they going to do with that money they got left? You know, they got money to run a few more months, even if, even if lost, you know, as they currently do, and so maybe it'll turn around by them, so that's why I thought I'd say it here, if anybody's looking for childcare, north end of the county's.
Yeah, and I know we've seen ads, we help share their advertisements that they have openings available.
Okay.
And just a reminder of our meeting, talking about childcare, a reminder of our meeting tomorrow at 11 o'clock here in this boardroom. I know some of you guys have come before, but I would just encourage all of you guys to come, just to kind of understand like the full version of the story, kind of what we're doing. And then I think there'll be a ask for public dollars coming soon.
If the majority of us, or if there's a quarter of us here at that meeting, we're just basically in a listening stage.
Yep. Keep waiting.
Okay, it's eight forty-five, open public hearing. Open public hearing on ordinance number sixty. So it's eight forty-five and we are now in a public hearing on proposed ordinance number sixty. Consideration of this ordinance is being held at the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors meeting, excuse me, at the Mitchell County Courthouse. Ordinance sixty is related to the division of taxes levied on taxable property located within the 2023 addition to the Mitchell County Urban Renewal Area. So Rachel, was known, was notice of the public hearing published in the newspaper and were copies of the ordinance available at your office?
Yeah.
Has the board received any written or oral comments in regards to this?
I have none.
No.
Sidney?
No.
I have none either. Any comments from the public attending this meeting?
I received an email questionnaire, I guess you could say.
Okay.
Stanlock emailed me and wanted me to ask these questions. The purpose of ordinance sixty is to provide tip funds to A to Z driving. Is this correct? Just for the record, I am in support of this economic program.
Yes, that's correct.
What is the total amount of monies you are proposing to provide?
Eighty percent tax rebate for 10 years with a maximum of $800,000.
Is this a loan that will be paid back to the taxing entities in the form of increased property taxes on a new increment?
It's not a loan, it's a rebate process.
What is the new dollar amount of new increment property taxes once this loan takes effect? What is it estimated to be?
I don't have, what, did you look at that? I don't have that.
I don't know how you can predict what property taxes are going to be in.
But it's not a loan, like you said.
It's not a loan.
I did look up the assessed value, it will be $4,398,190. And this one, this loan of tip is basically the same program used back in 2018 whereby the industrial and commercial incentive program made loans to the industry, commercial enterprises, and new housing incentives to build in Mitchell County. Is this correct?
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. If the answer is no, how is this program different? Changing the name while maintaining the same criteria does not change the program.
This is not a loan and we're not discussing other items that have happened in the past. We're discussing ordinance sixty.
Last question. St. Hansker and Riceville can use financial assistance with needed infrastructure since there is a total of $35 million in tip funding available. Will this Board of Supervisors provide help to these two cities since Osage is being assisted?
That's not part of this agenda, I don't.
That's all.
Okay, anything else? Close the public hearing at eight forty-eight. Okay, this is the first consider, next agenda item. First consideration of ordinance number sixties. So by code, we're through, there's three considerations, but by code, if it was published, if it was made available in Rachel's office, we can waive the first and second consideration. So Resolution 1195-23, I'll read that resolution. If the board chooses to waive the first and second considerations, we can do that, so, because the ordinance made available in her office. Resolution 1193, Resolution 1195-23. Resolution waiving requirements of 331.302 parent six, Code of Iowa, relative to the adoption of an ordinance of Mitchell County, Iowa. Whereas a certain ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of Mitchell County, Iowa, entitled an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property located within the 2023 addition to the Mitchell County Urban Renewal Area pursuant to section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa and referred to as ordinance number sixty is to be considered by the Board of Supervisors at this meeting. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Mitchell County, Iowa, that provisions, requirements of Iowa Code 331.302 parent six related to multiple considerations and votes on the proposed ordinance are hereby waived as they pertain to the proposed ordinance entitled an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property located within the 2023 addition to the Mitchell County Urban Renewal Area pursuant to section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa and referred to as ordinance sixty. So if we choose to do that, it will be passed today, so I will accept the motion to approve 1195-23, board choose.
I will move to make that motion.
Brian has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mayor, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
We'll call Todd.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sidney. Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Motion carries. So in this agenda item, Resolution 1196-23 is the resolution that approves the ordinance. Resolution 1196-23, Resolution entitled an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property located within the 2023 addition to the Mitchell County Urban Renewal Area pursuant to section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa and referred to as ordinance sixty. Whereas it is appropriate to adopt an ordinance entitled an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property located within the 2023 addition to, excuse me, to the Mitchell County Urban Renewal Area pursuant to section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa and referred to as ordinance number sixty, said proposed ordinance attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Mitchell County Iowa Board of Supervisors, that the proposed ordinance attached hereto entitled an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property located within the 2023 addition to the Mitchell County Urban Renewal Area pursuant to section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa and referred to as ordinance number sixty is adopted. And it is adopted if we choose to approve it, so I will accept the motion to approve Resolution 1196-23.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1196-23.
Mayor's made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Hendrickson is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
We'll call Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney. Jim.
Aye.
Todd.
Motion carries. Discussion on Mitchell County Soil and Water Conservation.
Wait, 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 we gotta go back.
Did I miss something? Oh, I made you ask me too. Sorry. I started filing through these and I dropped that.
Just a few brief updates. The crews out working on, we had discussion a few weeks back on this Cameo Bridge, we're getting that tore out, that's got the pipe delivered, so they're working on that the next couple of days. I think one pipe might be already been delivered, so they're working on that. The 105 bridge, they're still intending to deck on that, so I'm not, I haven't had a current update on when they plan on pouring yet, but I'm gonna guess it's in the next week or so that they want to pour that. I still think they're planning on a mid-November completion. Weather will play a part in that. Also, I took some, we have some asphalt patches we need to take care of throughout the county, and I did include in that quote, to try to get some things done before winter on River Road. We've got some outer lanes that are sloughed off that probably need to be built back up because they really need help, and then down in that low area, a lot of potholes and things like that, so there's some extensive stretches that need some work. And I got a quote, I sent it out to two, to two contractors and I only got one quote back, but the quote we received was from Heartland Asphalt for $94,000. That includes several patches on Addison Avenue, the patch we did on 380th, when we put the culverts in, and then a lot of that is, there's some, like I said, extensive links on, on River Road that need to be kind of touched up, so. It's, it's expensive, but I think we need to probably try to get this done before winter, so.
Are you milling them?
There's going to be some milled headers, I think some of the patches, we might have some budding up in just the rock spots instead of doing a bubble patch. And a lot of these other patches that we're doing, especially Addison, have been done before, but they've settled over time, so we'll probably try to, there's going to be milling in there, whether they mill a bubble patch on the Addison ones just to fill them in, but the one on 38th, we're going to try to just peel the rock out, put a good six-inch patch in, so that we've got some structure there for when we do that project. If we do a cold and place, we've got some structure there to, to cold and place recycle and then mill over, so. Otherwise, if we just do a three-inch bubble patch and we were going to do a project later, we'd be into the rock, so. That one, and then yes, I planned on doing, River Road, if they can get to it, just on the lanes that are sloughed off to mill along centerline and not take out the paint, but just give a good milled header in there so that it ties back in, so we're not raising the grade, we're just going to fill the edges off. I know last time we did something, did a skim coat and we peeled it off the next winter, so. It's expensive, but I think we need to get these things done before winter, so we'll get them pushed through. And then the only other thing I have for you is just to make sure we get the, the board's approval on selling some equipment we have. Worth County approved selling the Ford Escape through, or a sealed bid, but we also have a few other things. We've got some small power washer, hot seat power washer, one of our old pickups, some old, old pickup boxes like the C10 boxes or whatever, the old 60s and 70s style boxes that were old in tile. We've since reorganized our tile stuff, so we'd like to get them sold on the sealed bid, and we have an old V plow on a wing and then an old pickup toolbox that we won't be using, so if you guys are okay with that, we're going to take sealed bids, we'll put it in the paper. I suppose if we put it in, get it to the paper this week and we put it next week, and then we want to take the sealed bids by end of day, November 3rd, and then we'll open the bids here on the 7th of November during my session. We will, what I, what I advertised in Worth County was to, the engineer's car is sitting in Worth County right now with the other vehicles we're selling there, if people want to look at it, it's over there. And then we'll take the quotes over there for that, and then I'll bring them over here on that Tuesday. We'll open everything up for that, for the Escape, since it's a dual-county vehicle, we'll open everything up here, but it gives the Worth County taxpayers an opportunity to also bid on, on the car and the list open up here, so if you guys are okay with that.
So this discussion approval is, we'll, we'll do a formal vote on it, just to. Someone get the motion approved.
How much?
Parkville the motion, Hendrickson's seconded it. No discussion? Hearing none?
We'll call Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney. Jim.
Aye.
So then one other thing, we've, I was our consultant last week, the Raze Grant has come around again for another year, I think I discussed that with the guys a week or so ago. We are going to submit the bridge south of Osage on T38 here to include in that grant, but also the bridge on 320th over by Stillwater, the one on the curve there, it's really narrow. That bridge is actually on the qualifying bridge list for replacement, the one south of Osage is not, but we're going to submit them anyway and just see how the cards, how the cards fall on that. We may or may not get anything, but again, it's the same, it's the same setup before, they want us to see if we're willing to commit for the consult fees to put the grant together like we did last time, and I'm going to fill that out as yes, just because we were able to, and you only, you only have to pay that, that fee if you're chosen to submit what the rest of. what the rest of the counties in that, in that fund, otherwise we don't. It worked well for us last time, we got the one grant, so it was a money, it was money well spent in return, so we're gonna try to get that stuff in by Thursday to the grant committee and then see how that goes from there. We may or may not get anything, but we've gotta keep trying, because these bridges, they wanna, they wanna use bridges that are, um, I think it's, it's the comparison between what we get for bridge funding every year and what the bridge would cost at a, at a, at a borrow ahead of four and a half years, so a really, really a two hundred thousand dollar bridge won't qualify for that because it, our funding covers that every year, but if it's one of those extensive bridges where it's over a million dollars, that's more than four times what our, what our funding availability is, so that's the kind of bridges they wanna see, the big ones that are spanning the larger rivers, and so I know that we, we've got a major route going on T thirty-eight south of Osage to the Avenue of the Saints, and, uh, seems to be one that takes a lot of loads, so if it does, even if it doesn't make the qualifying bridge list, I don't know what chances we have of getting it in there, but sooner or later we've gotta get something done. The, uh, like I discussed last time, we're not gonna be able to keep up with the new standards of allowing heavier loads on all of our roads and bridges, so if we wanna, we wanna actually have some routes available for heavy loads, we've gotta start doing something, or people just have to start figuring out how to run lighter loads even though they're able to overload, so.
Any questions for the engineer?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion on Mitchell County soil and water conservation, district water sampling. You want me to hook up this?
Jim.
We can, if you'd want to, we, the, it has to go over there, so.
I could do it without it, if that's all right.
Yep, that would be fine.
Okay.
I wanna introduce yourself also.
Yep, um, I'm Devin Stortz, I work with the Rock Creek Watershed Project. Started last November, um, and all that ties into here is the board supervisors helps fund our water monitoring, um, that we do every year from April to October. This year we got nine thousand dollars to monitor twenty-three streams throughout the county, um, we've been monitoring streams in the county since two thousand and six. That was kind of started off with our, um, soil and water commissioners got that going, and so I just wanted to kind of break down a little bit what exactly we're doing, um, when we've been monitoring these streams and how that plays into, um, the, I guess, the growth of Mitchell County. And so we're monitoring these streams, we're monitoring a lot of different things, we're monitoring water temperature, um, pH for acidity, we're monitoring the dissolved oxygen levels that are in these streams, um, the transparency, um, and then we're taking water samples and sending to the lab, uh, each month, and there, those lab, uh, samples are being analyzed for nitrates, phosphates, and E. coli bacteria. And so three things to keep in mind there with those nitrates, phosphates, and E. coli, um, nitrates are basically married to water, so when we have heavy rain events, we're going to have high influxes of nitrates in our streams. Phosphorus is primarily tied to soil, so we have heavy rain events, unexposed soil, um, soil gets leaking into our streams, we have high phosphate in our streams, um, which leads to the increased temperature of our stream, that warms our streams up. And so the importance of that stream temperature, um, the way it is in Iowa, to be classified as a cold water stream for trout, you've gotta maintain, uh, water temperature of under fifty degrees year round, um, and so that's an important number that we're always looking for, what we're monitoring through our spring and summer and fall months, um, because that's an opportunity to bring more, um, state and federal dollars to our county if we have a stream that would support trout life, um, and then the recreational opportunities that would come along with that as well. So that's just one of the things that we're looking at when we're doing that, um, with the nitrate and phosphate, those numbers for us are helping bring watershed projects to our county. The Rock Creek Watershed began in twenty fourteen, and that watershed project is here because the soil and water commissioners and the board of supervisors in the county reached out to the Iowa Department of Agriculture and saw that we had a nitrate problem in, in our, in a major body, um, major water body in our county. And so the Rock Creek Watershed was established, like I said, in twenty fourteen, um, and implemented to aid the adoption of these types of conservation practices that will improve our water bodies, um, and with the water quality goals of reducing in-stream nitrogen by forty-one percent, um, reducing in-stream phosphorus by twenty-nine percent, and reducing or increasing organic matter in the watershed by one percent. So these are important numbers, and they follow along with the Iowa reduction, the Iowa nutrient reduction strategy that was implemented in, I believe, twenty twelve. And so these numbers are in correlation with that, so if we could reach these numbers in the watershed, we could reach a good, um, I guess, baseline in the Cedar River moving forward, moving south into Floyd County. So looking at where we're at with these numbers, um, so we said the Rock Creek Watershed's goal was forty-one percent reduction in nitrate, twenty-nine, and phosphorus from our two thousand nine, two thousand and eleven average levels. In two thousand and nine, two thousand and eleven, the average levels of nitrates were nine point zero three milligrams per liter, um, in two thousand and two, our averages were eight point three one milligrams per liter, so we, we're moving down, we're trending downward, but we still have a long ways to go. In terms of phosphate, in two thousand and nine, two thousand and eleven, we had, uh, point zero seven milligrams per liter, which doesn't sound like a lot, um, but it really does, uh, it's, uh, uh, the volume there, um, is high. And then in two thousand and two, we're at point zero five, so in both levels, we're trending downwards, but not as fast as we'd like to see it, um, and if we're gonna have a reduction in forty-one percent in nitrate, twenty-nine in phosphate, um, our goal projection would be three point seven milligrams per liter in nitrate and point zero two milligrams per liter in phosphate. So we're not super far away, um, what that tells us is we're doing good things in the watershed to keep that soil on the ground, keep it out of the stream, um, we're making faster improvements with our phosphate, but we're still losing nitrate, um, at a substrate. So here, and I can pass some of these around actually, so you guys can take a look at some of these graphs in here, um. There's just a few graphs in here, so you can kind of see the actual trend line of our nitrates, um, and that's what's promising for me here, we've been, this is seventeen years of data, um, on the Rock Creek, so I'm just using Rock Creek for reference here, but this is a stream that we've got seventeen years of data on, that's, um, really valuable to this county because data is extremely valuable in terms of bringing dollars to our county for projects. And so you can see here that we've got a steady decrease in nitrates moving throughout the seventeen years, of course, with influxes, you can see on here, um, so in two thousand and eight, we had that big flood, and you can see that right on here at the beginning, um, we had a super high flux in, in nitrates, and you'll see that on the phosphorus graph as well, um, but this is just breaking down, so you can kind of see that we are trending downwards, these practices that were implemented in the watershed, the cover crops, the no till, the grass waterways, um, all of these things that we're preaching, we're sleeting slower and slower and slower, um, but we're moving forward, and we're taking these practices into the watershed, and we're seeing a little bit of, and we're seeing some, um, response from it. Another important one I put in here, and these are all due, um, to, to mill here, Mill put these graphs together, and these are really great, um, but this one here, uh, I just wanna make sure that we, we can show you guys this one. This yellow trend line here would be the average precipitation from two thousand and six to twenty-two, um, and you can see that's slightly increasing, and then the dark orange, um, line here would be the average nitrate levels in the stream, and you can see that decreasing, so that's a correlation that you wouldn't see, I don't think, without the conservation that we've been doing over the last ten years here, um, in that watershed. So we're seeing higher, um, more often, higher level rain events, um, but our nitrates are still continuing to trend downward, and I think that's due to the continued adoption of these conservation practices year after year, the positive adoption that we're seeing. This year, um, something that we add into our funding with the board supervisors here, we're to monitor bioreactors. Bioreactors are a conservation practice, um, kind of sponsored by the Department of Agriculture, um, where you dig a pit in the ground, intercept a tile, um, dig a pit filled with wood chips, um, that denitrify that tile water that comes through it, um, the idea is to have that water just slowly seep through those wood chips, denitrifying the water, and then kicking out cleaner water on the other end, um, into the ditch or stream or wherever that tile was outletting before. So we started monitoring those because they're a newer practice, and we wanna know that they're working, right? And so this, I just, uh, put one of the bioreactors, we're monitoring four this year, so I put one up here, um, that we had pretty good reductions with, and so that graph shows you, the bioreactor data graph shows you month by month, there's four months there, April through July, is what I had the data for when I put this together, um, but you're seeing significant reductions, and overall, um, the nitrate that was coming into that bioreactor over all four months was about fifty, um, parts per million, and what came out of that was about twenty-two parts per million, what came out of that bioreactor, so we're about cutting up nitrate in half by pushing it through that bioreactor, and that's a practice that is covered in a hundred percent cost share, um, for the farmer to implement, and so if you're taking care of the land on top of the ground, um, it's important to, to also keep in mind the nitrates that are leaching into that, um, that tile water too. And then I just wanted to keep us, um, leave us with like a few, four things that we can do on our own to improve the water, while I do the things that we're talking about here, and that's these cover crops. Cover crops in Mitchell County, I think, were one of the leaders in northeast Iowa, um, we have a lot of adoption here, a lot of acres on the ground every year, and it's continuing to go up, um, and that's something that we're doing with the NRCS and as a soil and water district, we're starting to implement every acre of cover crops and every acre of no-till strip till, um, every grass waterway and wetland and buffer strip and stream bank project onto this new software online, um, and basically that's what the state and federal, um, governments are looking at, at each county to see what your production is, and that's kind of how they're delegating dollars and stuff for, for different counties, employment, um, programs, and different things like that, so that's kind of our thing right now, what we're pushing, um, is making sure that we know about all the conservation on the ground, that we're getting that implemented, um, so we can benefit from it here. And some of those practices are, are super easy ones, the cover crops, the no-till strip till, grass waterways, and, and the nutrient management. All four things can apply to every acre of land here in Mitchell County, um, and so if we could take those into consideration and little by little, um, I think we could continue moving to be a, a true leader in conservation and, and sustainable agriculture here. We definitely have the support of the community, um, and we have the support of board supervisors here that help, help fund this water monitoring, um, which helps give us more, um, oomph and, and a little bit more background and able to support what we're talking about with these practices that we're trying to sell. But that's, that's all I have, um, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them.
I have a question, uh, looking at this Rock Creek trends from about six to twenty-two, the water temperature went from fifty-three point nine to fifty-seven point seven.
Yep.
Is there an explanation why water temperature is rising?
Yep, so, um, that's something that we have, so we think about, the Iowa nutrient reduction strategy was put in place to deal with hypoxia in the Gulf of Mexico. Hypoxia would be that influx of nutrients, that influx in phosphorus that warms the water, um, basically when you have an influx of nutrients in the body of water, you have all this new algae growth, all this new activity happening, and that warms up the water. And so I would guess on that year that we had a lot of rain coming, um, we had more soil getting into the water, we had lower water levels, then high water levels, and that fluctuation bring a high water temperature.
And then, like, with the low water right now and all the green, how's, how's that tested?
Yeah, so it's been, so last month, we had, uh, there's four streams that were dried up that we couldn't get samples from, um, but this summer's been super abnormal, we've had, uh, nothing ab, something crazy, like we haven't had super high nitrate levels or super high phosphate levels or anything like that, it just has all to do with those algae booms, so we see hypoxia in our streams here in Mitchell County every day. The dissolved oxygen, um, goes up and goes down all the way throughout the day, change, you know, as it's colder in the morning and gets warm and gets colder at night, that water temperature, you could measure it at, at ten AM, um, and it'll be different at, at eleven o'clock. And so that's why we gotta make sure we stay on this, the same schedule that we're doing, the third week of every month, first two days of the week, um, and try and stay as consistent as we can with that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Are you promoting cover crops throughout the whole county, or I know, I know we need to focus somewhat on Rock Creek Watershed, the board supervisors funded water sampling which is Mitchell County, so.
Yep.
Your role, do you focus on cover crops throughout western county or more as in the southwest part of the county?
Yep, I, I definitely focus on the whole county, um, with the Rock, like with the Rock Creek Watershed, this year, um, we had seventy-five thousand dollars for cover crops and forty-five thousand for no-till, and the support that we have, we were able to get that out the door with, down to new ground too, um, new acres, and so then once that's out the door, then I can kind of focus on getting back to the county, um, doing our equip and our CSP contracts through the NRCS. We're down in employment right now, um, with our NRCS office, but we'll have some new employees starting soon, um, but I know this year, so going to some more NRCS meetings, I think it's a goal for some of the other counties in the state to have, um, I think it's five equip contracts and five CSP, and we're well over that goal already, so we're definitely on track of, we're trying to stay in that top five counties, um, in the state with the amount of contracts that we're doing, and then if we can stay in that top five, then it's pretty safe to say that we can, we can continue to take some of these more IRA dollars that are coming in the next four, five years.
Is the area, the county that's more receptive to cover crops and no-tills, strip tills?
Oh, it's, it's hard to say, um, I think the Rock Creek Watershed Project has a lot to do with some of the adoption in the county, um, that was kind of the first get-go, and then it kind of spread from there, um, and so I guess, if you, if you were to look at a map, I would think that the western side of the county would be more filled up than the eastern side of the county with active acres.
But there's interest on the east side?
Definitely, yep.
It's not like it's a.
No, yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't say it's any divide, but if you had to say, I would think that the influence from the Rock Creek Watershed probably sparked things a little quicker.
I guess I should have worded it that way, there's interest throughout the whole county and you have to do this.
Yep, and that's a big thing that we're moving for in our office right now, is trying to do more outreach, um, make sure that everybody knows that these programs are available, um, and that you can come on in, and it's really no headache at all, um, a quick sign up, and, and then you're helping us out, and then we can help you out too.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Well, this is a good thing that this is happening, so we, we appreciate you being here, thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Uh, IT update. I put that on there because I wasn't sure where we're gonna be with a lot of the stuff that's been going on, um, in terms of improving. Uh, I know the next agenda item has to do with, uh, job descriptions, but I'll just leave it at IT update, any comment from the board about that thing, or?
The only thing I had was, um, Chris called me yesterday, was concerned about the nine-one-one, active nine-one-one emails. The, the IT program apparently pays for the, something with the firefighters, and so they all got notices that their, um, dues weren't paid, and they were in violation, and so Chris thought he sent it to sheriff, that he thought sheriff paid it, some, there's miscommunication, but the IT program pays it, and that we're supposed to be getting emails, I searched for an hour to find anything with active nine-one-one, and I did not find anything in the emails or invoices or anything, so I don't know what that was all about, but, hopefully they, I think sheriff paid it, I wish he would have stayed, but, um, yeah, I think they paid it. We might be receiving something, Rachel, from Sheriff's thirty-first, I don't know, I don't, I'm not understanding why it's in the IT department's budget.
That's something you can look up, read it sometime, just see.
Yeah, I know, a lot of items, I don't know specifically this one, got switched to the IT department, they, because it was all coming out of ninety-nines before, so it originally came out of ninety-nines, it all got moved to the department of forty. And that's about all I really know.
It's fine, I was just hiking that by, in, in the emails, he was wondering if I got a notice, and, nope, I don't have anything, and, and even if I did, some of this stuff was like junk, I don't know, it was junk or spam, like, so I just paid attention to the alerts that I get every single day and send it out the way.
Why that?
And then the IT comments. Um, I do have a discussion, possible action on IT job description. So I know, uh, Mike and Mark have been working on this, and there was, I believe, there was two just descriptions that kind of got.
Yep, there's that. Two of them that kind of nailed, would help Rachel, and now done it two, and, uh, I picked one of these two, and, and put it in the paper, and, you know, I guess.
I'm not opposed to either one of them, I just have some questions, and they're just questions from the board regards to them, I think.
I don't have any, because I, I just ran these off, but haven't had time to.
I don't have any, because I just ran these off, haven't had time to read them, but I will after the meeting. I'm guessing you guys all being, doing it, you're kind of pick the one that best fits Mitchell County's.
You guys have them in front of you by chance, or? The one, the one, the one that's longer, I guess, I like that one myself. It just seems like it describes the position a little bit better. There's, there's a couple of things that are on the other one that I'm wondering if they shouldn't maybe also be on this one. I guess that's my only thought was. On the longer one, it doesn't, doesn't say anything in regards to submitting the resume, a cover letter, references, or where to submit them. Doesn't, doesn't address that. And I just think that would be beneficial if a person's looking at this job description to know that this is what they have to send in and where they should send it. On the longer one also, I don't see where it says anything about pay and benefits as far as if there's a range, or unless I missed this stuff, but you know, a person looks at this, and naturally they're going to want to know what they're going to get, an idea of what they're going to get paid.
I don't Joel put these over, like the one that says pay grade to be determined, you know?
It says on that longer one, that says that?
Yeah, yeah, right at the top.
Okay. Oh, there.
Yeah.
It says send applications to the auditor's office.
Yeah. Yeah. Limit applications, director. Bill to the auditor's office, application will be accepted, they'll provision this bill.
Okay.
If they go to the auditor's office, they are private information and they're not to be shared with.
Right.
That's it. It doesn't get, people do not get to see these. It's private information. So what do you think? Pay grade just to be determined is adequate enough, or should there be some idea as far as what somebody's going to get paid? I think they'd want to have an idea.
Well, people in the business kind of know, but I think, I, I don't know.
Well, no, I wouldn't think they would know. They, they'd want to know what the county's going to pay, but that's just my thought. So I just want to make my comments.
Yeah.
That's all.
Joel never indicated that, I don't get, he's helping with this, that.
Well, that is true, and I appreciate Joel, but this is our deal. This is what we decide. I'm really happy about Joel helping us, but we make the decision.
Yeah.
The auditor number in there? It's just a thought, okay? So something to think about.
Yeah.
And then on the second page of that, in regards to the sheriff's office, it mentions a lot of things, and we might have all of that stuff in the sheriff's office. I don't know that. I don't know what that stuff is, but I know the, the application that this came from, from the county, they had questions in regards to that sheriff's area also, so maybe it doesn't hurt if we mention that stuff, even if we don't have that equipment, but.
It was verified by the sheriff and 9-1-1, everything that he put in there. Did you physically talk to them and say, this is what's going to go into the application? Is this correct?
Joel knows what the sheriff's department has, so it's coming, nobody knows what's coming in the future.
Yes, I know.
But the other duties as assigned then are for assigned. Future.
Yeah, that was, it's kind of ahead, okay? Just want to make sure that, I didn't know if we had that equipment, so might not hurt to ask. Okay, that was just my comment on that. Those are the things that I just, it was questions about. Oh, and another question, maybe original just do it. ITs, is the HIPAA security officer?
I think that's how it's always been.
Okay.
Then, at least I've been around, but.
I don't have a problem with it. I just didn't know.
I don't know if it's right or wrong.
Yeah, I just didn't know what that, it says, it says HIPAA, HIPAA security officer, so I just.
That. I think, uh, if you're showing it to federal or state law, it's going to be federal law. I think there's, you require one of the HIPAA compliance officer. I do believe that at one time, probably fifteen years ago or more, somebody got the bright idea to have me as the HIPAA security officer. But I don't believe that I am anymore. I think the auditor is, and I have no objection to that. I mean, I, you know, I mean, I just do. I suppose the, the reason I was designated as this is because they thought, oh, you're an attorney, and you can know HIPAA better than anybody else, which probably is not true. But, so.
I just saw that, I just wanted.
Yeah, right. But, but when I was, I don't recall anybody ever asking me anything about anything regarding that. Do you know what I mean? I mean, because I always kind of feared if they did it. I mean, of course, now you have so much more technology. You can research things a lot quicker than you could then.
Sounds like an easy job unless you get the question.
Well, I think so, yeah.
I have one more question. You guys have the GIS on here, so are we going to allow this new IT person to help with the GIS since we took it away from home?
Well, we got levels, so the GIS, and it costs us more for more license than it for putting him on. So that's why we eliminated to Rachel.
So I think, I'm trying to find it here. IT would still have to maybe go from one place to the next.
Right.
So like from, I don't even know all the systems, but from where we are in art pro, making that available on our Quarko website, being that where you take literally the one file and you put it in another place.
And he wasn't doing that correctly. That's why we told him not to do it anymore, so.
Well.
See how it goes.
The wrong files were getting sent, like outdated files. I don't know how to do them.
I was just curious because they weren't going to be covering that, that GIS should be taken off.
That, the audit that was done, was people commented that, that you can have somebody that wants to be a GIS person, but the person that needs to be GIS is a person that definitely knows what they're doing, and they have to. It's not a learn-as-you-go thing. You, you need to pretty much sit down. If you're going to be a GIS person, you need to sit down and you know how to do it.
Yeah.
Because it's a big deal. So do we want to? For one of these, do you want to work on it a little bit more, or what's, what's, what? Or you feel like we should add a number in for?
Firstly, I think that should have some idea of range, or, but should go with what?
Them people recommended?
They recommended eighty-five, and I think, I think our existing one is sixty-five, so I mean, the person could say a range from, the T, to be determined is no, no problem, but I'm not sure how to word it exactly sitting there, but I think based on experience, I would need to butt in, but I think you could put based on experience and then what, put sixty-five to eighty? Or something like that.
We go with that?
We go with that, yeah.
I, I just think of, for somebody to look at this and have an idea.
Yeah, more, more people have better ideas, you know?
Did you say you wanted, like, the insurance benefits on here that we wanted?
Well, Mitchell County is a I'm not sure what, what's your thoughts on the benefits? I mostly wanted the, the dollar thing, but.
Benefits, and they get IFRS, too.
Yeah.
So I think the more we kind of put where I'm, the more based on experience, I think we have control of, you know, I think if they know they're getting IFRS and.
That might be a perk, too.
Yeah.
So Mitchell County has an insurance package, and IFRS is, it's an IFRS job. Don't have to specify all the insurance coverage is, but just.
Right.
Insurance package.
We could add that in, I guess, right? I don't, I don't know. Do we want to approve something today, so we get going, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be fine, just.
With, based on what's, based on those changes?
Yeah.
Is that?
Can I just, you don't have to make sure I have it down right?
What's that?
Can I repeat?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so you're looking at the longer one, stuff like that. And then in pay grade list, based on experience, sixty-five to eighty. And then is it okay just to, how those are listed at the top with the pay grade that the LSA says? And then just put additional info, insurance and benefit package?
Yep.
Is this it? And you want to keep the HIPAA security officer there, or officially designate?
They both had that. This one had a HIPAA thing on it, too. Both of them did, so.
And then, thinking about it, is it also on there because of all the security stuff that have to do with the sheriff's office?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would probably keep that in.
Yeah, okay. And then you had talked about the application process, but is that under that first big paragraph?
Yeah, it's there.
Yes. And you wanted resumes?
Yeah, this, this one, the shorter one, talk in regards to submit resume, cover letter, references.
Just take that paragraph there and add it in. Um, page two, where it has the application process?
Yes. Interested candidate should submit a resume, cover letter, and references to.
Yep. Add that to that. Does that make something?
I think so.
And then previously, we had submitted like a little ad that just said, IT director opening. Do you want just a little ad put in, or do you want this whole thing put in the paper?
I would just essentially just an ad.
Sounds good.
Because then in the ad, it says where they can get the description.
Big enough so people see it.
Yeah. Yes, we posted on the left thing.
Yeah.
That ad is a, does that ad need to, I've got it in here somewhere. Does the ad need to be updated from what we did the last time? Is there anything, I don't want to be specific to something we're not doing.
I don't think it was very specific.
Okay.
I'll verify and make sure if anything needs to be updated, I'll just open this.
Maybe we'll use the newspaper. I mean, IT people don't need newspapers.
Yeah.
I mean, so fast, what people are looking for, don't need an actual paper anymore.
Joel's going to post.
Okay, okay.
The Joel postet will be on our website. Laura from home house said we could use Indeed if we wanted to. She's got a thing that we could.
Did Joel say you could put it on that ISA?
Yeah, Joel said he was going to do that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the people that are really looking are probably looking at.
Yeah.
The people that, no, probably.
We at least have four.
I still want to view paper in our website.
Yeah.
Nobody do figure that anymore.
I'll make a motion to approve that Mitchell County job description, informational technology director, with all those corrections. You guys did a good job.
Yes, did. I started with me to, Henderson has seconded. Is there any further discussion? Karen Dunn.
I'll call Jim.
Aye.
Sydney. Hi, Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Todd. So here we should just thank Rachel. Thank you, Rachel.
Okay. And Joel, Joel's on that, so. Discussion on possible action on H.R.A. pay request application number seventeen. This has to be the sheriff's H.R.A. project. Primarily, the work that happened for this application is materials, labor, general, electrical, that, like of a contractor. It's more insulation, and then some, we approved the change order request number six. So some of the work on that dollar amount that we approved is on this also. So this application comes to the amount of one hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and thirty point four zero dollars. I'll accept a motion to approve H.R.A. pay request application number seventeen.
I'll make a motion to approve pay request application number seventeen.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Right, seconds. Any further discussion? Karen Dunn.
I'll call Sydney. Hi, Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Question carries. Discussion on possible action on compensation board appointment. Well, I mentioned last week that I reached out to an individual, and his name is Joel Wolflander. You'd be happy to serve on the compensation board. Any discussion from the board in regards to that? I'll accept a motion to approve Joel Wolflander for the comp, to represent the board supervisors on the time and conservation board first. On the comp, on the compensation board, excuse me.
I'll make a motion.
Did you know what your motion, that's what I said?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second.
Who makes a motion? Me or seconds? Any further discussion? Karen Dunn.
I'll call Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye. Question carries. Discussion on possible action on Mitchell County refreshment policy for PEOs. Rachel, will you put that on? You want to speak up for that?
So, um, we're not allowed to let our election officials and staff leave during their duties. It's the best training over election day. This year, I was just looking at it, training is going to be a little bit more in-depth. They're asking for PEOs to do a little bit more than they have, I guess, in the past, you'd say. And they have updated our electronic poll books. Typically, they like to sit there and go through them a little bit longer. So we're doing it at nine o'clock, but I'm anticipating it to be maybe four or five hours. So I was just wondering about passing our refreshment policy that we could allow, just order something for them to eat while they're in the training on that day. A lot of other counties have done it, but we've never combined it full class, so.
Any discussion from the board or questions?
I, I've talked with Rachel the other day about it, and I kind of feel like we're, we've been down in paying our coworkers and stuff, and we will talk about that again, but she's got it covered financially and stuff, so I think it's a good deal.
I think it's a good idea also.
Any comments? Uh, well, I'll ask for a motion to approve a through resolution. Resolution eleven ninety-seven dash twenty-three, resolution of public purpose for election activities and training. Whereas the Mitchell County auditor is required to authorize and train election officials and the election staff to serve the public during election activities. Whereas election officials and staff are required to serve without leaving the premises during election activities. Now therefore being resolved, we find that providing food and beverages for election officials and the election staff during election activities and training are a public purpose and in the best interest of the public. And if we approve it, it's adopted this day, the seventeenth day of October, twenty twenty-three. I'll ask for a motion to approve resolution eleven ninety-seven dash twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
Martha makes a motion. Our who makes a motion, is there a second?
Sidney.
Any further discussion? Very none.
Alton.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Bye.
Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approved recorders, monthly report. There were. It was a total of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven point two one dollars collected. The state took eleven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three point zero five dollars. And we got six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two point one six dollars. Oh. Is that just a sound noted?
Nope, it's a nothing.
Motion. So I ask for a motion to approve recorder's report for the amount of six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two point one six dollars.
Make that motion.
Our who makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mayor seconds. Any further discussion? Very none.
We'll call Mike.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Sidney.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I didn't know meetings attended. I had a North Iowa juvenile detention meeting and they opened their Brownstone facility. Brownstone facility is for age groups eight to seventeen. It's a twenty-four seven crisis stabilization center. And one of the comments from an individual at the, at the meeting was there's been positive feedback from the parents and social workers about the Brownstone facility. Law enforcement teachers, healthcare, social workers can refer youth to the Brownstone. North Iowa juvenile detention focuses on the county's social services area, but they will also take youth from anywhere in the state. So it's, it's a good thing what's happening there. I guess that's the, that's the most, there was a general meeting, that's the most positive thing that happened there. So I wanted to say that. And they had a transportation policy board meeting. There's a. There's a what's called TAP fund, that's transportation alternative projects. And it mostly deals with the water trail that we're going to be doing. It deals with bike trails, walking trails. There's alternative transportation, alternative things that happen in the state. And the state of Iowa, definitely the federal government is big on, on that now. Doing things to, funding things that have people enjoying life, making them healthy, that type of thing. So the federal government has a new guidance document in regards to this. And it's just changed some of the terminology in regards to how the. Different guidelines for, for funding this. It's, it's always been here, it's just a different, they have some new guidelines. I guess that's the main thing of what happened at that meeting. So that's all I have.
I had a landfill meeting. It was kind of a short update of the major budgets, holidays for twenty twenty-four. They're supposed to get their new tractor traded this month. And they picked. Have to be the new Osage representative as well. Which is the waterworks guy from Osage, I can't remember.
Um, Gary Schneider.
No, the guy with the really long.
Oh, Brock.
Brock.
You done?
I thought I had more, but postponed until next month because of artists, so.
Well, in the conservation board meeting, Mike went over that pretty much. Like one thing you forgot, lean government, give a report on the WOFC trail. There, flowers. So. Otherwise he went over pretty much everything else, so that's it.
I had an insurance meeting. They said be prepared for next year on insurance rates going up. Keep low, but the way that nature is going and they're going to go up. But safety guide set up, scheduled going on to all the colonies, giving a schedule for that for this year. And then sexual harassment, training classes coming up for all employees.
I had none. Good. Um, this might have been department discussion, but this is for you people to know that the tractor that we purchased for the grounds here for Dave to use. It's in, it's outfitted, all the equipment is associated with it is here. So they sent me an invoice, sent the invoice to the auditor's office. It'll be in the next claim session. And I'm sure they're going to probably want to have your money before they make the transfer. But anyway, that's, it's in the process of happening, so.
Okay.
I forgot to say that before. Only comments, any from public? Yes.
I'd like to thank the board for the assistance in funding for the water sampling, the conservation. I think it's an important thing. As Devon said in his presentation, it's, Mitch County is kind of a leader in conservation, not just the water, rock, river, shit, but the whole county is. And I think it's important to track these trends that we have, to have a good yardstick, to prove what we're doing. And it just, I think it changes spotlight on Mitch County for doing that.
I agree. Agree with you. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anything else? Anything online? Okay. Meeting is adjourned.